So, stuff like that to me it's easy.
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
Hey, Marcus.
Go ahead, Craig.
We have actually three at one time. First one being the closeout of the grant for the Love Louisiana Outdoors. The second one is for the annexation of the Lee Cooper Road property off of Borden Street. And the third one being the budget for our coming year fiscal year.
If anybody has any questions or would like to go ahead and come forward to the council in either one of these public hearings, you can do so just now.
I mean, if anybody has any questions, I mean, it's open for fifteen minutes, they could ask. Let's see. This is Jonathan's letter. I know it's gonna be hard for you to see, but this is his letter about the not being able to make it what he wants to bring up. Chief. Chief, you and Jason come sit.
Because there's a good chance I'll miss something.
All right, six o'clock, the meeting will come to order. It'll have the implication of the pledge of allegiance for Mr. Carl Chapman.
If you could all join me in a Lord's prayer, please? Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Life will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us the day.
Our good and evil, our trespasses, and evil deeds. And give us not temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The right thing to do. Item one, approval of the agenda.
I'd like to add something to the agenda.
Okay, this way.
The appointment of the dog handler. We can do it during the chief's, uh...
You wanna hold on, Mike, I'm finna pull, I'm finna remove number twelve, you can put it there.
Whatever.
Okay. You wanna pull twelve, too?
Yes.
All right, we'll go ahead and put that on twelve.
Okay.
Anybody else? Do you need a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I'll make a motion.
Motion of Mr. Mike?
Second.
Second of Mr. Carl. Any discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Item two, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of May fourteenth, twenty twenty five.
Motion.
Motion of Mr. Carl. Need a second. Yeah, I said, I said my Mr. Eddie to address the (bleep) myself.
Hello, for those of you who don't know me, I'm Nick Saruman with Saruman, why not stop? Just wanted to let the council know and the city know that we recently purchased the property next door to us on Highway one, Robert Johnson's property. And we plan on tearing down all those old buildings, build a new why not stop ground up on that property while keeping the old one operating. And then we'll figure out something to do with that one after, after the new one's open. So, just wanted to announce it here in case anybody had any questions or concern with anything.
Congratulations.
I assume y'all, I assume y'all, your designers gonna come by and get appropriate bring...
Yeah, yeah, I just contacted them last week once the property purchase was complete. Same apartment we usually use, it's Ballard out of Alexandria. And we, yeah, I know there is, I think it's an eight inch water line that runs across the middle of the property that we'll probably have to move up against Highway one, but we need to search and find it and all that. What I remember when we busted it about fifteen years ago, nobody really knew it was there, so...
Anything that the city can do to help you just get a touch with my depth?
All right.
Any, any lives that you need to locate, series of waterway?
Okay. Yeah, at some point we'll have to locate that. We hope to maybe get into demolition this fall, get all those buildings out, old concrete out, so kinda heal some over the winter and then...
Is it all the way from the AutoZone property all the way to the corner?
Correct, from AutoZone all the way back to the (inaudible) station. And Dutch is acting, we'd already picked up the, uh, that piece on acting that has the three little rentals.
Yes.
So, that'll come down as well to give us access on acting.
Well, no, the way y'all, y'all do y'all's other buildings and all, it'll be done like I know.
Same footprint is out, same (inaudible).
Same with the one by those street?
It'd be much bigger. Though, that one, the Mansour one was about fifty-five hundred square feet, that would be (inaudible).
Nice, anxious to see you.
Thank y'all.
Yeah, I have any questions, I'm sure y'all can find them.
Anything we can do to try to help speed anything?
Sure, appreciate that, appreciate that, so. Should be kicking off soon?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave.
Anybody else, delegation?
Good luck.
All right. City engineers report?
Thank you, Mayor and council. Our first item on my agenda that I'd like to discuss is our water sector project. That's the phase two project where we can do some improvements throughout the city. And where we first started work was on Highway fifteen on the Esfera Highway. We have inspected those super mains and we are... We have inspected those sewer mains and we are actually pleasantly surprised that there's not a lot of problems. We'll talk about that in, in my next item, but we're not seeing the amount of, uh, damage that we expected. So we may have a little cost savings there. We'll talk about that again on my next item. But as of right now, the contractor is planning to mobilize next week and do some work on the man, a manhole that is on North Lee Street. It's along Bayou Pory. Uh, it's one that we had in the project and we're hoping to get that doing next week, barring any weather, which seems like it's gonna be setting for the next few days, but that's the plan as of right now. My next item on the list is what I'm calling our sewer system repairs. And that was brought up at the last meeting. Y'all asked me to go and do some investigations along, um... Some investigations along, one second. Foster Drive, Tarleton Street, Barrel Street, and Ridge Street. We got with Rondale. We went out on the site. We looked at it. We've taken some elevation shots, done a fairly extensive investigation. And I want to just talk through real quick what we found and what our plan is. So we'll pull up a map real quick right here so you can see. Okay, so we started out over here on, this is Outbridge Street, right here. Right here, and there's a manhole here, and we think there may be some issues with that manhole. Uh, Rondale's guys actually went out today to do some camera inspection right there. And the line had some water in it, so we weren't able to do it, but I'm pretty confident there's an issue right here we need to fix. Over here, you'll see, can everybody see this? Probably green wasn't the best color. But the, the little green dots represent a manhole. The green lines represent the sewer mains. So there's some issues starting right here in number eight and probably all the way of this sewer line. And, and I don't have it drawn in because I don't know exactly where it goes, but I think it comes right here and then comes back to a manhole here.
So if you, if you look at it from house, that bottom house, it goes three houses up and on the backside of the tree and the grass, uh, I mean, in the tree line. I went out there myself and looked at it.
Does it go here?
Right, right up in that tree.
And, and that's what Rondale told us. I haven't seen it. Uh, what I don't know is, does it come back here?
So it goes from, it, it leaves from that bottom, goes across an angle, and then goes up to the top and that runs down to, uh, just the way you have it and then come across the body.
Okay, now, know this, it's flowing this way.
Yes, that's flowing there, down to that one, and then coming across.
Okay. All right, so there was some issues there. We, after the first rain event, we went and looked. The sewer manholes were surcharged. They appear to have a good bit of sludge in them. And then, let's see if I can mouse here. All right. Then this line is the big twenty-four inch gravity main that goes all the way to the main pump station on Main Street. That one was surcharged as well after a rain event. And what we've come to find out is there were some issues at the main pump station. So the pump station I'm talking about is the one over here on Main Street. We call that the terminal pump station. That's the last place all the sewer goes before it's pumped through to the pond. Rondale has since got those pumps working and we believe working correctly. So we don't think we're gonna have as many or as much problems with it surcharging. And surcharging is when it's not flowing and the water's building up in the manholes, in the sewer system. So, but, but there, there were some evident problems. There, right here in number eight, we, we, it's experiencing some overflows. Uh, the manhole's just in really bad shape and I was supposed to be able to click on this and show you a picture, but it's not working, of course. Um, but this manhole's in really bad shape. We believe there's some other problems along this run of sewer mains. So what I am proposing, I've gotten a price already and it, it had multiple things in it, but I've spoken with Rondale and we want to break it down to just repairing this manhole for right now and then hiring a company to come here and clean and inspect that sewer main the entire route. I think we can do all of that for somewhere around fifteen thousand dollars total. I think it'll be about eighty thousand dollars or so to clean it and probably another five or six to seven thousand dollars to price that manhole. I'm recommending we do that. In the meantime, once we get the inspection, we'll know what other problems we have.
Rondale and I spoke and, and some of that, uh, some of those lines are the oldest lines in town. Uh, is, is that some of the lines that have that terracotta?
Yes.
Is it just best to replace that and try to clean it?
Well, so I want to do this in three phases. The first thing I want to do is get someone to replace this, you can't see it, I call this number eight, this manhole right here, because that's the one that, that's causing some discharge out in Rondale every time it rains. You probably happen to go out there.
And we found this, it had a bypass in this manhole. We capped it off. DEQ was notified. They came down several times. And every time it rains, I have to send a report. I have to keep a guy every time it rains. If it start raining now, you'll see one of my trucks going down there. I have to keep the video log, pictures, and a written report. I have to send it every time after the rain. This one here is emergency. The other parts, it will get fixed, but this is something I need like now. If it keep on raining and building up, it's liable to just bust over.
And I think the problem is, is the ones that first developed Shenandoah?
Yeah.
They didn't do it correct to the here level. So that, that's what the problem is, and we're having to go ahead and correct the problem.
Yes.
So I went out, when I went out there and you can still see the discharge from some of it whenever it's coming out. So you can see that it's, it's something that needs, uh, immediate attention.
So, back, back to what I'm thinking right here, I think we replace this thing immediately. If that's next week, great. If it's the following week, as soon as the guys, the contractor can get out here to fix it. Then simultaneously, we go ahead and clean and inspect this line. But without it, guys, you really don't know. You open a manhole and you don't know what's going on in between them. So I think we do that. That's step two. Step one, fix the manhole. Step two, clean and inspect this line. In the meantime, Rondale's gonna try and figure out what's happening right here. Now, how, what are we gonna do once we find out the prob, what the problems are? As I was saying on our water sector project, we think we're probably gonna have about a hundred thousand dollars that we may be able to move over to address some of the concerns here. I don't know if we'll spend a hundred thousand, but I think, I think we could probably fix it or do a lot of good with a hundred thousand dollars. Once we know what's going on, we come up with a scope of work to fix it. By that time, Rondale's gonna know what's going on right here and what we need to do to address this one. And then I'm hoping that we then move all that work into the water sector project and it's covered by the grant. That sounds like a feasible plan and that's what I will move forward with. Now, what we're talking about, remember I said it, I think it would be about fifteen thousand dollars to inspect the turf? Inspect that sewer main and fix that manhole? I'm asking for the city to go ahead and come up with that money and do that work immediately. So that would not be covered under the water sector. Is that something that you guys think is, is doable? Fifteen thousand? Okay, all right.
We have to do something before we get taken to court and we get sued. So something has to be done.
Yeah, and, and that'll buy me a little time to shore up those numbers from the water sector. I think it's in the neighborhood of a hundred thousand, but I don't have it nailed down exactly. I just got the reports. I got the information from the contractor today. So that, that's pretty fresh and I just haven't gotten to the edits, but I am confident it'll be around that hundred thousand.
So Marcus, you have a, uh, you have a contractor on standby just waiting on us to do this? Yeah, I'll make the motion that we go forward and, uh, prepare for it.
Motion by Mr. Danny, second by Mr. Mike. Any discussion?
No, but I am going to abstain, abstain half of all reasons for.
All in favor? Sixty-five, I say aye.
Aye.
All right, Marcus, go ahead.
Okay. Next item on my list is the South Washington Street Road and Drainage Repairs. That project is complete? No, I'm sorry, that's only the agenda. Let me back up. I won't jump ahead. My next item would be our street project. If y'all remember at the last meeting, we talked about a grant award for five hundred thousand dollars that we got for the streets. And we have to come up with a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That hundred and twenty thousand dollars is paid for engineering costs and grant administration costs. Whenever I wrote it up last time, this was a hot topic and we said, hey, we need to figure out how much money this is gonna cost us before we pull the trigger on a hundred and twenty thousand dollar street project. So I will show y'all. I've put a few pictures together that I thought may be helpful. Now, I put this together when I thought it may be a hard decision. I think now that we've decided we're gonna spend fifteen thousand dollars of our money and then the grant's gonna cover the rest, this decision gets a lot simpler, but I'll still, I'll still show it. So you can see. So you can see what it covers. Okay, this is a map showing the limits of where the work will be. So this is Laurel Street, right here. This section from Scallon Street to Roy Street is where we're talking about working. That's where the improvements would be. So I'll show you a couple pictures of what that road looks like. Again, this was for everybody to get a handle on what, what we're dealing with and make a decision. Again, I think the decision's a little simple, man. So that's what we're dealing with. That's the existing conditions now. Just a couple of those snapshots of it, guys. This is probably the worst one out of the streets we're planning on doing in this project. It's like a whole patch on it. Okay, that's at the intersection of Roy, Laurel and Roy right now.
Yeah, that's, that's the worst one really, yeah.
No, that's, that's at the bottom of that road. Cinderella is at Laurel Wood, uh, Scallon. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, then what, these are the other areas that the street, the grant would cover. And this is Oak Street, Preston Street, Elm Street, and Willow Street. So the areas I have highlighted in red are where the project's at. So it stops at Willow Street, nothing past that, North Preston, going Elm Oak, Elm and Willow. So a quick little snapshot of what that looks like. Kind of the same thing, guys, just four patches over the years, fixing potholes. Not quite as bad as Laurel, but it is. See there, it's pretty bad. It's just cracks all through. This is Willow Street. It's like Willow Street that the drainage crossing, bridge apparently. Willow Street, again, you just see fluid. Okay, so guys, that's the conditions, that's the streets and that's the conditions of them. Uh, what I need now is for the council to make a decision on whether we're moving forward with that project or not. Because the plot already started ticking about a month ago. We've got six months to do plans and specs and we've got five months to do the environment, actually the grant consultant does. So he's already working on it. We haven't sorted on the plans and specs yet, but I do need the council to make a decision on whether we move forward with this or not. I will tell you that, that hundred twenty thousand dollars is gonna be incurred and expended over about a twelve to fifteen month timeframe.
Well, I'll go ahead and make a motion to go ahead and get that taken care of.
Motion by Mr. George, second by Mr. Mike. Any other discussion? All in favor, sixty-five, I say aye.
Aye.
All right?
Okay, now that we are going to move forward with that, we've got a management, LCDBG Public Facilities Management Resolution that we need to pass. Craig, did they have copies of this resolution in their package? Okay, so guys, I'm not gonna read through it. Essentially what it is, whenever you got your clearance grant, that's the, the grant to give them of the houses, you've adopted a LCDBG Public Facilities Management Resolution. Well, this resolution is saying, hey, we're gonna take that resolution and make it part of this street project. It's just as simple as that. What this management resolution does is it appoints people to certain, um, positions, just standard, standard federal program requirements, five oh four coordinator. Um, it's just a laundry list of things that you do every time you get an LCDBG grant. Anybody have any questions on that or want me to go into any detail on that? It's a financial management requisition of funds, settlement, deposit funds of assistance for a bank, equal opportunity, five oh four coordinator, section three compliance, language access plan, resident, residential anti-displacement, section five oh four grievance procedures, and policy statement for communicating with persons with sensory impairments. So again, just standards. So we need to adopt that resolution?
Need a motion?
Motion to adopt. Which, which one is that?
A second one.
Yes.
Second one?
Yes, sir.
Carl, you read it?
Yeah.
Motion by Mr. Carl, second by Mr. Danny. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. All right?
Is that in the fact of proof?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we know.
I think there's two copies. And it's just a requirement of the grant, guys. If it was something more than that, I'd fully leave the details, but I just don't think... Okay, that is all I have on my list that is not already on the agenda. So, uh, if y'all are ready, we can move on to the next item.
Go along, like, we all made a, a thing, but we, we had told them, yeah, you want to, you got a motion and then you got a second, but then...
Second one?
Yeah, we...
Right, it's, uh, motion by Carl, second by Mr. Danny.
Yeah, that's where you got there.
Uh?
That's where you stop there.
No.
We did, we did go.
Uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, Paul, you finished, Marcus?
Yes, sir.
All right, you might as well just stay there for five.
Yes, sir.
Resolution to adopt South Washington Street Road and Drainage Repairs. Project has subsequently completed, Mr. Marcus?
Okay, guys, everything is done. I'll just show a couple pictures here of what it looks like. I've gone several times after, during a rain event. Everything seems to be holding up. But we got the box culvert in the ground, catch basin. We put a little drainage swell. Everything comes in. If you pass, you'll notice the ground's a little lower. It comes into some windows in the side of the box. We put this culvert here, tie it in to the driveway culvert there. We got a pipe stowed out into the large drainage, catch basin, and a pipe stowed out here. We dug that ditch right there, a little bit. Uh, Rondale at some point is going to clean this ditch here and that will help make sure that water stays on this side of the road and doesn't jump over. The project is complete. What was the final numbers on that? It hadn't changed from whatever we had agreed upon or that. I don't have the invoice yet, but it was, it did not change. There was nothing that came up to warrant any adjustment. The grass is up. It actually came up a lot quicker than I expected. See, that's what I was talking about there, these windows in the side. That was, we couldn't set that box low enough, so we we got some windows in the side of it. That's it?
Do you need a motion? Hold on.
I'm gonna try to get down that stretch quite often, and I did so again this evening. Uh, we've had a cleanup that needs to be done.
Yes, so as soon as it dries up and this grass, uh, takes over good, Rondale, correct me if I'm wrong, but you guys are gonna throw it here?
Yeah, we didn't wanna go, when they finished the project and they knocked those trees down, they had just planted grass and it's still wet. We didn't wanna put a heavy equipment on it. So as soon as it dries up, we're gonna take all that out. All the culvert, the parishes are gonna move those culvert floors. That's gonna be for another project in the form of that. And all the dirt is gonna move together now.
It's good, Marcus. Y'all did a good job.
Yeah, thank you, Bernard. I'm glad you mentioned that, just need to hear all right there, some stuff that needs to happen.
All right, make a motion, a second. Motion by Mr. George, second by Mr. George. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Okay? Item six. Authorization authorizing occurring of death and insurance cannot exceed four hundred thousand dollars of limited tax bonds, series twenty twenty five, the city of Mooresville, state of Louisiana, and providing for other matters in connection therewith. And then Mr. Black?
Yes, good evening. Bernard Black, with all of you down, council. Uh, so last month, you all gave a limit...
Uh, so last month, you all gave preliminary approval to not exceed the four hundred thousand of limited tax funds. Uh, that is to fund the water line relocation project, which I understand is necessary before DOTD to complete certain drainage improvements. Um, so with the approval that you gave last month, we made application to state bond commission, we did receive bond commission's approval this morning. So what this ordinance does, it sets out the final terms of the bonds, uh, it accepts the offer of Cottonport Bank. The interest rate will be at four point seven five percent, but it is structured as a drawdown loan, think of it as a line of credit. So you all will be drawing down funds as needed for the project. Uh, with your approval tonight, we will close tomorrow morning, uh, so that the funds are lined up and you all are ready to begin the project. Uh, with that, have any answer any questions?
I'll make a motion, man.
Motion by Mr. Danny. Second, uh, Mr. Carl. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Thank you, sir.
Aye. Alright, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Marcus. Assume with that information, that y'all can probably start putting that out for bids?
Yes, yeah. I mean, we've got a little bit of work to do before we can put it out, but yes.
But while we're here, there, does there need to be a motion to go ahead and do that? So you don't have to come back to, put it in branches in the water?
Yeah, so we're making a motion for it.
So they can go ahead and put it as a draw and just put it out for bid?
Yeah, you have to, and that's why I'm asking you this, so we don't have to come back.
No, it's fair to take another one.
So, so under, so we're going to do it, uh, in conjunctions with number six, correct? That's why, because we can't add something, so we're going to do it with conjunction of number six.
You need to pass this, we need to go ahead and.
So Ben, Danny gave the approval that, that we have that, we're going to make the motion to go ahead and put out for bid now.
Right.
So we make that motion.
I'm making that motion.
And I'll second.
Of course.
Motion by Mr. Danny.
And Carl will say.
Second by Mr. Carl.
Where you think you'll put it out, Marcus?
We've already got the plans complete, we just got to put the bidding options together, I hope by the end of the month.
I, I'll, man, if it's okay with you, I'd like the public to know that this money is, uh, to go ahead with the Holy Ghost project. So we can change the, uh, utilities and the state can come in and take care of the drainage issue. Uh, also let you know, if we wouldn't do this, we would lose the money probably from the state and have to go back and do it again, the money's already allocated. They're waiting on us, now it's done, they can do their part, I'm going to correct Marcus' course putting it out for bid. So hopefully, November, December, we have, I don't know, we can.
Yeah, I think that's.
I think that's the schedule, the state has to complete it by the end of twenty five.
Is the state still waiting on the city to move it along?
Yes.
Here's, here's what I meant by that, I think by the end of the year, we'll have hours relocated, possibly sooner, in the fall, if possible. The state is planning to bid their project out, I believe in the fall. That project will probably take into probably at least mid twenty twenty six, I guess. And I don't know all the details of it, but I can see that project.
We'll have all the work done, that way they can do things, exactly.
We're trying to get ahead of the game.
Yeah, I guess, bottom line, what I'm saying, man, is to let the public know that, um, we are working on the project and it's, it's going to be fixed, it's going forward now. At a, you know, pretty rapid pace now, so, um, to let everybody know the project is, we will correct the problem. Thank you, Marcus.
Got a motion by Mr. Danny, second by Mr. Torrey.
Yes, sir.
Call's taken.
Call's taken.
Yeah, call's taken, sir.
Uh, question? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Alright. Item seven, approval of occupation license for Sage Printing Company, LLC.
Good evening, um, my name is Kelly Berry, and, um, I'm here petitioning the council for approval of an occupational license for Sage Printing Company. Um, it will not replace, but it will be similar to what Main Street Printing has done for about as long as I can remember, because I was a child. Um, will be located at one oh three East Alvin, at the corner of Alvin and Main, across from computers nine oh one. Um, we have our email, um, owner and operator will be Brandon and Kelly Berry, manager will be Ms. Kelsey Roy. Um, she's, she's a lot of the brains behind, uh, this, because she's worked at Main Street Print for a long, long time. Um, we would be open Monday through Friday, seven thirty a.m. to five p.m. And of course, we would do a lot of the same things that were being done there, printing, copying, faxing, scanning, um, booklets, pamphlets, programs, obituaries, business cards, um, we would do some lamination, um, some transfer sheets, some vinyl decal, um. So, pretty much what, a, a lot of the things that, uh, Main Street Printing was doing, um, and maybe in the next six months or so, we could, um, become a UPS site for shipping as well, um, but we don't want to jump right off into there.
When do you, when do you plan it all?
So our soft opening will be July first, second, and third, because it's a short weekend, it's a holiday week. Um, so just to get people in, and, you know, they have small projects that we can work on, um, but we wouldn't take on like big projects, you know, in those few days, but our actual big opening would be the sixth.
Good, may I make a motion, man?
Motion by Mr. Danny, second by Mr. Mike. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank y'all so much.
In the morning, go into the city hall and get your, uh, pay your hundred dollars and get the.
Get your occupational license to go.
Go in the morning, it's essential.
Item eight. Item eight, uh, adopt the city court budget for the fiscal year July first, twenty twenty five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty six. Any motion?
It's, it's an increase from last year, eight, compared here. That's what it was last year, that's what it is this year.
Last year, the budget was two hundred five thousand, seven sixty twenty eight, and this year's total operating cost is two twenty one, thirty eight, thirty eight. So it's an increase of, uh.
Now, keep in mind, that's, we only have half to worry about with this, that's not the full picture.
Because the police jury, police jury is obligated for half, and we're obligated for half. The reason the police jury is obligated for half, a city court also hears cases in Hickory Hill, Bruyette, and Mokla, and that's outside the city limits. Therefore, they are obligated to pay half of this. So, uh, need a motion?
And I'll second it.
Ma'am?
Make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Nida, second by Mr. Carl. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Alright. Item nine, adopt the city's proposed amended budget for fiscal year July first, twenty twenty four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty five.
The proposed amended budget for the end of the fiscal year, June thirtieth, twenty twenty five.
Make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Nida.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Mike. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Item ten, adopt the city's budget for fiscal year July first, twenty twenty five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty six.
That's the next one. Put it on packages?
Oh. Yeah.
I'll make a motion, man.
Motion by Mr. Danny.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Nida. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Alright, item eleven, prime of union, Mr. Torrey.
You in? Well, uh, I'm going to speak a little bit before he go ahead, uh, we talked about it in the last meeting in reference to, uh, the state rate of what the, uh, what the pay is, uh, the breakdown. So they, uh, they got the numbers together, they, uh, gave us, uh, some different options to go by. And if everybody looked, they all, we should all have one, uh, and we all should have what it would cost per month uh, for the, for the different, of the, uh, the different two. Uh, number one. The number one look like this, man. This, this. No, the number one is on a few, uh.
The sharks.
Yeah. Uh, talking with the chief and, uh, a little bit, we was looking at the different ones and talking with finance personnel. Level one probably right now would probably be our best option. We would like number two, uh, but we want to let, let the, uh, council look at everything and, uh, go from there. Do you have any discussions that you want to break it down?
So we are able to reach out to any other municipal boards members, um, that's not, is this issue, correct?
No, I've been, I've been working on the amended budget proposal.
Okay, um, Lieutenant Boog, you know, he worked on this, he put a lot of, um, footwork and hours into this to get it to where it was, um, it would be beneficial for us, but easy on the city as well. Because we're, we're not trying to push for a ton of things, we're just trying to get the pay scale adjusted to, uh, to the state level. And if y'all can see on the increase, uh, the yellow highlighted areas on the far right. Um, like I mentioned last month, we were talking about pennies, and that's what we're looking at is literal pennies. And not everybody's going to be getting a raise, it's just going to be an adjustment for those, uh, that would fall under that pay scale per rank. So, any questions about anything?
Only question I have is, uh.
Yes, sir.
The total that you have, is that per month or is it for the whole year?
Those numbers there is what Felicia came up with, Felicia and Craig came up with those numbers, uh, these numbers here.
Right, but I'm asking, is the total dollar amount for the year or payroll or?
Per month.
Per month, okay.
Yes, five thirty nine, ten per month. Option.
For, those four employees.
Yeah.
That you see vested.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Option two would almost be double that.
Yeah.
And.
I, man, if it's okay with you, uh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Well.
This is the tour.
So, so we, uh, we looked at, at the different ones to see what, what, uh, better benefit the city and the, uh, the department. And right now, uh, from talking with finance and with the chief, uh, and, and a couple of the, uh, council members here. Level one, the, level one change would probably be the best right now, and we would come back within a year and review level two to see if we can move up to that status. And, uh, we'll put it on the books as so, if, uh, if we can get everybody in, in agreeance on it.
And it gives y'all a starting point.
Right. That's, that's what we're looking for, just to get our base.
So I'll make, so I'll make the motion that we go with, uh, with the first level change and a- adopt this policy.
And there would be five hundred thirty nine dollars to ten cents.
Correct. So Craig, the, uh, the budget has been built out to accommodate the possibility of these changes?
No. But you're going to have to amend the budget for, um, coming here. Marcus, you're going to have to.
Alright, got a motion from Mr. Torrey. Need a second.
So this, uh, we're not doing any raises or anything until January, so this will be taking place come January one.
Alright, I got a motion by Mr. Torrey and a second by Mr. Carl. Any questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item, uh, thirteen, for Mr. Marcus.
Twelve dollars a dog.
I'm sorry, yeah, we replaced the twelve, uh, pot hydrants with the move, and the dog, given the place.
This time I'd like, uh, Jason to come up and, uh, explain, they had an interview the past week.
Alright, last one, y'all, who just to go ahead with the dog, but after the interview, y'all wanted to come back to the dog, who, who the chief decided to fix. Uh, two officers put their name down, so after the interview, both of them got several years of law enforcement. One of the officers started back in February of twenty four, the other has been with us since thirteen. Uh, both of them have good ideas. Want to move the city forward with it, so basically it came down to stats, attendance, stuff like that. So I started with the twenty twenty four officer and did stats for both of them within that year, year and a half time period, so it'd be fair on both parts. So, with that being said, I have the stats here, if y'all want me to list them out, I can. If not, me and the chief are recommending, take a look, take a point, and take, be a habit of the dog.
So without giving me, in great detail, can, can you give us some of the stats that was?
Sure, and, uh, and both of them were aware to be at the meeting, so I can call out their names. Michael LaFleur was one of them that, uh, did a long case, so Michael, been here since February of twenty four. He's made sixty one arrests, after sixty one arrests, only two drug arrests within that time period, and he wrote eighty seven citations. Caleb, same time period from February to, to now, has a hundred and forty seven arrests, with thirty nine drug arrests and a hundred and fifty one citations. And their attendance, like I said, their attendance is pretty close as far as call-ins and showing up. So I have to meet with you, talk about it with, I guess, productivity and stuff like that, recommending, uh, we go with Caleb.
Did either one of them have experience with it all?
Neither one, neither one. As far as canines for his.
Canine experience at all?
For, for canines for, no, cats, I mean, they both have animals. As far as being trained to, for the dog, neither one, both of them would have to be sent to get trained, but brand new, for the first time.
Jason, you, uh, you, the first thing you said, you told both of them to come to the meeting.
Well, I got one more, one more detail.
Well, I mean, if you was applying for a job, seemed like you would be here, if you work in a detail or not, you switch with somebody. Right? And also, in the last meeting, I remember making a, uh, motion that, that whoever y'all recommend, we would have the last say so because they need to come before the, uh, council, so we, we had questions. So, since she's not here, and you have the other one here, I make a motion, we table lieutenant next week, that both of them can be here. And, you know, I understand, we all got to eat and we all got to work, but when you're going up for a job like this, which is a promotion, seemed like you would make accommodations to be here, right?
We just took on a one more detail, and not everybody's working and wants to work it, and she's assigned to it right now.
I understand.
And they pretty strict on when we can leave and can't leave. And I understand where you're coming from too, uh, but I know y'all hired and gave promotions to people that haven't been here in the past.
Right.
Uh, does that, uh, is that timeframe, that you have to.
Time limit, you lose a dog or?
Probably have to reply to that.
Very possibly, we wouldn't have, we might have to wait until next year to get a dog.
Well, we got to wait, we got to wait, because the same person.
Well, really, truly.
The same person we promoted them later.
The chief should be able to appoint his people where he won't without the council approval.
But that's what you want to do.
Unless it's a promotion.
It is a promotion.
There's really the chief.
It is a promotion. It's a promotion with a raise.
No, it's not.
Yes, it is, because guess what?
I- is there a possibility to lose it, to lose it, dog? Well, there are possibilities.
Yes, it already went, it already went up five hundred dollars since last meeting, because we prolonged it. Uh, I'll probably have to reply, uh, brief, reply again.
Then make the motion and give it to Mike.
Well, I'll make the motion, give it to the man that's here.
And I, I'll second it.
He, he came to the meeting, he made preference, he can't. Now, you want to fight about that? Let's give him the job, I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Second.
I'll second it.
All in favor, signify by saying, okay, y'all going with, y'all going with something where that the chief and the, and, and, and assistant chief are not having to work.
So in other words, you're saying that the chief, the assistant chief's interview.
Hold on, Mike, remember, remember that time whenever we came.
So we might as well get somebody off the street to interview.
Remember that time whenever we came in here and remember.
No, just y'all have a personal problem, and y'all let y'all's personal feelings tell y'all how to vote for something that's good for the city.
We trying to get, we trying to get the dog.
And tell me it's not true, but tell me it's not true.
You got an officer over there.
Now, tell me.
That put his name on there, he's here.
Okay.
The motion is made.
Not that they said that they had to be here.
I will, I, I second the motion, he made the motion, what, what we doing?
Alright, Mr. Nida has a question, man. Vote, man.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Nida has a question.
I do have a question, uh, and I know Jonathan isn't here, but who is to have the final say so as to who gets appointed? And does this?
The council always has the right to go ahead and appoint.
Okay.
And the ultimate decision is, they can make recommendations, but the council has to ratify it.
Okay, and was this, uh, advertised publicly, you know, or just within?
Within the process.
Okay, does this position come with a break? Okay, does this position come with a break? It does not.
There's no raise, it doesn't cover the?
It's not, it's not somewhat of a raise, it's just extra overtime hours.
Then you get the overtime hours. You have to, you have to give them thirty minutes each day.
An hour.
An hour each day, to, with the dog, to maintain the dog, so it's overtime hours that they will accumulate.
You got a motion and a second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand.
All opposed? Hold on, hold on, you have, Mr. Need, raise your hand.
We got four.
So you're gonna jump on the needle now?
Oh, yeah.
Jump on me after the meeting. Say what you got to say.
Go ahead, uh, Mayor, please.
All right. The vote is in favor of the uh, motion, so uh.
Well, no, I didn't vote.
He didn't vote.
No.
Well, you know, you're not voting for him. No, but you've got Mr. Danny, Mr. Need, Carl, and, and Danny in the building.
May I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
Mike, we need this dog. He just said, if we don't do something, we will probably lose the opportunity to get him.
But it's all personal.
Well, I look at it.
Can you, can you bring the guy, the, the gentleman forward that's gonna take the dog over?
Mike, we, we need this, we need this dog.
No, I didn't say it's, oh, yes, I said it.
I mean, I'll, you pick up the dog every week, and we have so many.
It was Mr. Danny?
Danny made the motion, I second it.
Do we have a roll call vote?
All right.
A roll call vote.
Go ahead. Go ahead. Michael Fleur? Yeah, he's, he's the dog, he's the one that's gonna have, have the dog.
Put it back, the most in fact.
Yeah. Mr. LaFleur, thank you. Be careful and do a good job.
Thank you for the opportunity.
No problem.
All right.
Thirteen.
Item thirteen. Uh, Mr. Marcus, discuss the demolition of the elaborated homes.
Mayor.
Please, Mr. Marcus. I gave, uh, since Mr. Jonathan's not here, he referred to uh, Mr. Marcus to go ahead and uh, and bring up item thirteen. Mr. Marcus.
Okay, I'm looking for the sheet you handed me, I have it here on my screen for the address, so the uh, what we're having is a, an opportunity, a hearing for the property. All right, so we had scheduled tonight for a hearing on the property two twelve Overton Avenue, and Jonathan's office sent letters to the landowner informing them that there was a hearing tonight, I think the landowner's from out of state, but either way, so we're having a hearing tonight for two twelve Overton Avenue. Is there anyone here to represent the owner or the owner here for this property? And that's, that was the, uh, the hint that we got, that the guy was out of state. Probably gonna be here, so, the property was inspected by us, we are recommending it for condemnation, and I'll go through, I'm not gonna go through my report, but I'll just show you the pictures, so the, the house appears to be abandoned. Broken windows, they've kind of boarded it up, but of course it's not completely dissecured, you can see there. Broken window, vent pipe on the sewers, uh, missing.
Well, I thought the church was supposed to be bonded for a piece of property, that's right behind Burrell's, correct?
Yeah, that's it, and uh, so many people involved in it, so they couldn't get everybody to sign, so they backed off.
Well, either way, unless they want the house, they should let us remove it.
So if uh, being that they're not here, a- and we gave them the public hearing, can, I mean, I know Jonathan is not here, but the procedure now, do we go ahead and tear it down or, or what?
So you'll have to make a decision whether you accept my recommendation to condemn it. If you accept my recommendation to condemn it, then it goes on the list, and we will condemn it later this year. But that will be probably August, September.
I'll make the motion, I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Danny, second by Mr. Torres.
That house also, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, um, that house caught fire about a couple of months ago, right? Y'all got there in time though, there's a bunch of smoke damage in it?
Yeah, we threw away stuff outside.
That's the one right behind Burrell's, the white house? Yes, I thought so, okay.
Okay, I mean, this inspection was done by a wall back, so.
We got a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
While you're up there, Marcus, from Preston Street, some of those condemned houses, when, when are those gonna be torn down? Where you got?
Marcus, they've already condemned it, now they won't fall on the, the grant we have. Uh, one of them is ruined, uh, someone bought that one, and they're gonna be tearing it down, but the other one I have the paperwork.
The one is burnt down, partially burnt down?
Yes, someone bought that, and they're gonna uh, tear it down.
Okay, and one uh,
That one across from Miss Lempert's?
Yes, yes.
And then there's one right past Miss Jenny's house.
Yes.
Uh, what, we can build, tear it down and bill the taxes?
Yes.
Okay, which one is that?
That one.
That one on the list.
No, that one's not, that haven't, haven't been condemned yet.
Okay.
Not the one past Miss Jenny, not yet, that's the second batch. We just did four, and got two back, they're gonna be going out next, that one there, probably is Jenny.
Yeah.
And any of those will have to go through the same process, same letter, sit on or have the hearing, and then make a decision with.
Y'all gonna do the ones on Burrell's dog?
We can do those next week.
Yes, next week.
All right, thank you, Mr. Marcus.
Ninety thousand, nineteen dollars and sixty-eight cents. Street, seventy thousand, forty-eight, ten dollars, twenty-four cents. Beautification, eight thousand, two hundred thirty-six dollars and two cents. Total, general bond, one hundred thirty-eight dollars, excuse me, one hundred thirty-eight thousand, one hundred seven dollars and eighty-eight cents. Sewer, seventy-four thousand, three hundred thirty-three dollars and sixty-eight cents. AWC, sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred ninety-two dollars. Water, fourteen thousand, five hundred sixty-six dollars and thirty-nine cents. Total, one hundred fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred ninety-two dollars and seven cents. Grand total, two hundred ninety-five thousand, eight hundred ninety-nine dollars and ninety-five cents. I make a motion, but please, uh, bills be accepted and telephoned.
Motion by Mr. Need.
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Torres. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Departmental reports, Mr. Craig, Secretary Craig.
Sales tax collected for May twenty-twenty-five, three hundred seventy-six thousand, one hundred ninety-four dollars, sixty-five cents. Of that, the one, one percent sales tax was a hundred eighty thousand, ninety-seven dollars, thirty-three cents. Half percent sales tax, ninety-four thousand, forty-eight dollars, sixty-six cents. The half percent public safety, ninety-four thousand, forty-eight dollars, sixty-six cents. It's an increase of nineteen point eight six percent for the month of April, when we collected uh, three hundred thirteen thousand, eight hundred sixty-five dollars and forty-eight cents, and a difference of one point six three for May of twenty-four, when we collected three hundred eighty-two thousand, three hundred thirty-six dollars and fifty-one cents.
Thank you, Craig. Craig, uh, we, we spoke earlier on the phone, I mean, uh, spoke earlier about it, and I just wanted to put it on record, about the, the annexation of uh, that stuff, can you go ahead and get the information and say?
Jonathan, Jonathan has that, it's, I can't send that, he has to do that.
Okay.
Uh, he said he, he's gonna talk about it.
Okay.
Understood.
Okay, for the month of May, the police department handled three hundred thirty-eight complaints towards twenty-one accidents, issued a hundred fifty-nine citations, made forty-two arrests. City collected a hundred twenty dollars from the city court, police jury collected five thousand, four hundred ninety-five dollars. The police, the public collected one thousand, I don't know if they're in the meat.
How much did the police jury?
Five thousand, four hundred ninety-five.
Guys and gals, there's something that's not correct here. Something's gonna have to be looked into. When this, when this agreement to have a city judge, and it's not the city judge's fault, goes in front of him, we just approved the police jury paying half and the town paying half, they'll all hurt it, okay? There had to be at a discussion at that table that went ahead and decided who, if we will go vote give half, who would receive the fine money? Nobody, nobody seems to know why the police juries get all of this five thousand. We rode the tickets, we had the cop, the cop car and everything else, and we just gonna get a hundred twenty dollars? It's ridiculous. There had to be something written down and agreed upon about the way that the fines were distributed. So, I, 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 we need to look into it some kind of way, because we, we getting gone, I mean.
Well, you remember a while back, a couple of months ago, our legislator said that he was gonna file a bill in a house to make it happen, and it's never happened.
But Chief, when, when it was discussed that you were gonna have a city judge, and that the police jury's gonna pay half of city court operations, and that the town was gonna pay half, there had to be some discussion on how the fine money was gonna be distributed among the two. It, it, it couldn't be lopsided the way it is right now, because I don't think the ones that did this would have, would have accepted it. Yeah, it, 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 it's something that's not right.
We need to get Jonathan to dig a little deeper, go, go a little further into that paperwork and find out.
Yeah, I mean, if, if we're paying half of the operation, we should receive half of the fines. Especially since we're using our cop, we're paying the insurance, we're paying the gag, the cop car, police jury didn't pay none of that. And they get five thousand? I mean, Rich Als can see what's going on here. I mean, it's ridiculous.
We got, we got to get Jonathan to go and dig, Jonathan will have the funds, something uh,
Yeah, we have to look into it, it's something that's, it's something that's not right.
I think the DA's got something to do with it. The DA's got something.
Big part to do with it, because any of the fines, any tickets or anything that's rolled going under the state, so therefore, he can prosecute it under the state law, if, I mean.
But, if the city's willing, and we'd have to ask the judge if it's permissible to have it in his court, if the city's willing to go ahead and hire a city prosecutor, that'll prosecute the tickets instead of the district attorney doing so, that's, that, that brings a different light on the subject.
Well, Craig, add it, add it to the agenda for the next meeting and get the judge.
But we'd have to ask the judge.
No, get him to, I, ask him to come to the meeting and see.
We'd have to ask the judge if it's permissible to go ahead and, and put our own prosecutor.
Yeah, because it's his court, so he.
Yeah, because it's his court.
I guess he have to prove.
Yeah.
So to get Jonathan to talk to you.
All right, yeah, that's cool.
But let's see if we can get him to the next meeting.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Can you give us an explanation, I see we have a hundred and twenty collected, and then I see nineteen hundred and eight police funds, can you give us an explanation?
On that police funds, that was the, what we came up with a couple of months ago.
The twenty-five dollars for the handhelds?
The handheld ticket riders, that's what it is.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Mr. Chris, Fire Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
I report for May, we ran a total of twenty-five calls, nineteen in the state limits, five outside the state limits, which consisted of one mutilate call, two brush fires, two vehicle fires, one tire burn, one, sorry, two auto accidents, one boat rescue, two hazardous conditions, one tree in the road during the storms, four fire alarm activations, one trash fire, and one assist to Louisiana State Police. I just have one thing to bring up, we need to order our remaining five sets of turnout gear to replace the five remaining sets we have that are expired. We spoke about that several months ago. It takes eight months to get the turnout gear here, I'm sorry, eight weeks, so we wouldn't be invoiced until around September. After we replace these last five sets, then we'll be in compliance, all of our turnout gear will be up to you.
I'll make that motion, go ahead and purchase it.
Chris, what's the cost?
It's like, right around thirty-one hundred dollars a person.
And we need five.
We need five more remaining sets, then we will be in compliance.
Second, Mayor. I'll second the motion to purchase that turnout gear.
You made a motion too?
Yes, I made it.
Motion by Torres, second by Mr. Carl, any other discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Chief, appreciate it. Mr. Ford?
What was this, uh, boat rescue, what was, what was that?
That was, that's unusual. In Spender. Oh, down uh, Bruyette, Bruyette Fire Department called, called us for assistance. And being that we have the parish rescue boat here, it was deployed uh, to Bruyette. Someone was lost in a boat, we ended up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Mr. Ford?
For the month of May, as y'all know, I went abroad for a month. Figured many, many bridges that fell down. Lots of rain, we've still been clean and cold and, and drenched. We're all cutting grass as usual, and we've been a fast town, businesses have been asking us, sticking up in between the sides, I just wanna see what you did. We haven't put as much coal mix because of the rain, but we're trying, we started and had to stop, and they'll stop before they can do. My animal's called a heath, and I got an inspection Monday, at Animal Shelter, ladies have contacted me already, and we're in compliance, and we're not picking up any dogs right now.
But.
Y'all ain't not picking up?
They sick.
Hey, uh, can y'all go around to the uh, the corners where these trees are at, or these bushes, especially like uh, at Main and Spring Bayou, and those, and those areas, and on uh, Spring Bayou and Shortbowl, at the edge where the, the vision is uh, obscured, can you go and trail some of those?
We got a, some people doing it all day long.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I have a crew with uh, so all this crew, if y'all need something in y'all district, we don't see it, just let me know, I got two guys going with a pole saw all day long, and everybody gets a truck and treads on that.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Sean?
In the month of May, we picked up thirty-nine bags of litter on the state roads. District one, twenty-four, district two, twenty-four, district three, sixty-five, district four, thirty-five, district five, forty-one bags of litter for a total of two hundred and twenty-eight bags. And I got the new sprayer, and I've been trying to spray some in everyone's district, until if y'all need that I haven't yet, just let me know.
Sean, for now, on Sunday, I haven't been.
Uh, we sprayed it, we cut it and sprayed it.
Sean, I just wanna, I just wanna say before you walk off. I don't know what the grass is called, because I'm not a farmer. Me and my kids call them chicken feet, but I doubt that's the scientific term. It's a little stalk that sticks up with the, with the two little springs on top. Bahia, that, bahia, very difficult to cut. And I'm seeing where y'all are cutting, but it's not being cut, and I know that.
That's at zero turn, while he's doing that, he can pass it three or four times, and some places he's.
Is that, is that a new mower?
And we got a brand new set of blades, you know. If he's gonna put it short.
Well, and, and I'm going, just say on Monday evenings, you know, I went to the wagon wheel this past Monday to, to check that. There's some of them are still this tall, I know y'all passed over them, uh, and I mean, I know at my house, I gotta cut them three times, but we, we, we gotta do something, you know, because it's, it's gonna give the conception to the, to the, to the residents that it's just not being done, okay?
I'll hold it some stickles.
With that, uh, that, that, we need all of them.
I think the talking I had with that crew about that problem, I think it'll be.
Okay, right.
Thank you, Rodney. The manhole that's been coming up by the bank, and we're planning on doing that job next weekend. Not this weekend because of the rain, we're gonna have the access to do it on the weekend because of the, uh, traffic at the bank. So I'm planning on Sunday morning, they're gonna cut it, and next weekend, next Saturday, we're trying to get out there early, jackhammer it up, replace the lid, and have the concrete, because we have to open it back up and follow the night.
Are we raising it to, to level?
It's gotta be the same uh, elevation.
We're talking about for, so for the, the lid, are we gonna try to get the lid at the, at the roof?
Same thing.
Same thing?
Yes.
All right, uh, the safety, all I have is all the guys that's working outside, gonna try to stay hydrated. It's getting hot out there, and, uh, we'll be having a safety meeting at the end of July, and it's gonna be for everybody. It's gonna be, uh, driving courses, support courses. And fire, we're gonna, I want y'all to have this, this for, I know y'all will be on May, the accident, you sub for the fire. All right, the hydrants, I know Mr. Thrill, he took it off, to just update on these hydrants. Uh, Mr. Nash has been going out and flooring the hydrants for our rate, and they went to the subdivision, uh, Shannon Door, and found a few of them that were not working at all. So we got a Bryce, and he took it off, and it's been ordered already. So they had a four-week lead time, it was thirty-nine hundred to fix all seven. So, or it's been ordered, as soon as they come in, they'll be fixed, and I think he'll be finished, the whole system and four shifts.
About two or three or five shifts, I'll be finished, and I'm quite sure I'll run into a few more where it, it will be the tension, and I'll get Rundell and we can handle that.
So?
I already, all the two that's in Chanhwood subdivision, because we have a lot of residents in that area, and if we have a structural fire, Facebook will lead us up.
So, uh, once y'all find them, I don't pay the coming trouble, let's go ahead and get them fixed.
And this, this new company that we found, I mean, for the price, it's five hundred seventy dollars a hydrant. You don't have to shove the water off anything, you fix it right there on site.
There you go.
And that's all I have.
Thank you, Ron Ed.
Don't need one. No, because of the price.
Uh, Mr. Nita?
Rundell, speaking of safety, we're, we're really getting into the hot tips. When will the work start?
They're starting, they're starting next week.
Okay.
Are we on the ocean, uh, regulations?
Just beautification, because they work with the weed eaters and working with a weed eater and the heat from it. Uh, street department is gonna still do regular time. It's barely any heavy equipment, but the weed eaters, they're gonna start our work.
So the weed eater, what, I mean, are they on a break schedule? Or, I mean, on the ocean break schedule?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Rundell? I suggest you maybe look, water is good, but maybe look at getting some Gatorade?
We, we tried, and let me tell you the thing on the Gatorade. Thing on the Gatorade has a lot of salt in it.
Yeah.
Someone has high blood pressure and they start, it'll make it worse on them.
The stuff that, uh, the, the stuff that we're going through with our job, it's, it's pretty expensive, so, yeah, you have to stick with the water.
We took it to replenish the bowl, that's the right.
All right, Mr. Nita? Thank you, Rundell.
All right.
Hello, Adele. For the May, uh, month of May, we locked eighty-three meters, fifty-seven customer paid. I made ten of them inactive and sixteen still owe, and we making some of those files for next month.
Thank you, Ms. Beverly. Marcus?
We got an emergency, but, uh, for the month of May, they responded to one hundred sixty-five service calls, ran fifteen profiles, and repaired sixteen units.
All right, Mr. Jonathan's not here, so I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Motion, Mr. Tor. All in favor, signify by saying aye.